Heather's supposed to be Heather as well.
Yeah, he's been here since.
All right, the hour of six o'clock is upon us. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board, Thursday, June 26, 2025. If I can have everyone stand for the pledge.
The United States of America and to the Republic from which this stands is one nation under God indivisible, liberate and just across all.
Okay, do we have any additions and deletions to the agenda? Seeing none? We don't have any approval amendments. We do have three items tonight that we'll be discussing. The very first item, item number four A, is Mullenax Ford. It's the request for a major site plan approval, administrative use approval for an auto parking and storage lot. Mullenax Ford of Vero Beach LLC, owner and applicant, Mills Shorten Associates LLC agent, zoning CG, general commercial and OCR, office, commercial, residential, land use description CI, commercial industrial. This is quasi judicial. Any decorations of ex parte? Seeing none. Those that wish to speak on this item, please stand and be sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, staff.
All right, for the record, Brandon Christopher Craig, in chief of current development. Chair members of the board, before you today is the Mullenax Ford, major site plan and administrative permit use. So on screen is an aerial of the overall portion of the site that also includes the main Ford dealership. Everything north of the Ford dealership that you see in purple OCR, which is our office, commercial, residential, and then also the little sliver of the general commercial that's in orange that is to the west of this property is what is of subject tonight. On screen is an aerial, just to give you an idea of what existing conditions are on site. It's mostly heavily wooded, and then there is also an eagle's nest on the site as well that we'll detail a little later in further slides. Site plan is going to call for 294 vehicle parking spaces. This is mainly just for the vehicle inventory for Mullenax Ford, and I imagine they will also use it for some employee parking as well, but it's really just for inventory parking. Everything that you see that is paved or is shown as a parking lot, that is the OCR portion of the property. Everything west of the edge of pavement, including the eagle's nest and the stormwater pond, that is the general commercial portion of the site that is not going to be touched except for to create the stormwater pond. Traffic circulation is just going to call for general drive aisles that are going to offer two-way lanes of traffic. There's two full movement driveway connections to the main Mullenax internal roadway system. Stormwater plan is going to call for just one stormwater pond in blue to the west of all of the pavement. The landscape and tree preservation plan is going to call for a 25-foot thoroughfare plan road buffer. County stipulations state that they have to have at minimum a 20, and the applicant's providing additional five feet along Indian River Drive. No buffer is required to the southern portion of the site, however, you do see that they are going to provide a little bit of a buffer there as well. To the northern portion of the site, for just the parking area, there's going to be a type C, 25-foot wide buffer, and then as you start to get into the preservation area more to the west, that's going to turn into a tree preservation area where the applicant's going to endeavor to save as many trees as they can on site, and I do have the representatives here today that would be prepared to talk a little bit more about their preservation strategies. You can also see the eagle's nest, and then they're going to be providing shoreline trees around that wet stormwater retention pond as well. Staff recommends that the PZC grant major site plan and administrative permit use approval for the Mullenax Ford with the conditions listed in the staff report. One of the most important conditions in the staff report is their adherence to the United States Fish and Wildlife incidental taking permit. I just want to note that the federal government has jurisdiction over the protection of eagles, and they have granted an incidental taking permit, so we as a county have no say-so in that incidental taking permit, but they have gotten the permit, and it was included as part of the packet for your purview tonight. They also have to adhere to all the final landscaping, street lighting, and tree protection and mitigation improvements. They have to construct all other improvements that are indicated on the site plan, and then also provide site lighting adjustments as needed. Thank you.
All right, commissioners, any questions on my left?
Not at this time.
Any on the right?
Not at this time.
Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and open up for public hearing. Anyone in the public wish to speak, please state your name and your address.
Evening, Chairman. Pleased to be here tonight. My name is Dan Soro with the Engineering and Planning Firm of Mills Shorten Associates. We are the project applicant. I thought staff did a great presentation. Just had a couple of things to add that may provide a little bit more background and insight into the request before you this evening, if that's okay. A little bit of history of this project. This used to be a former Walmart site, so it is already an adaptive reuse project. Once it became a car dealership, you know, this project is an infill. It's located right between US-1 and Indian River Drive. US-1's probably the most trafficked road in all of Florida. Goes all the way from Maine down to the Keys. So it's in an urban environment. It's developed. Everything is built up around it. Our project is minor. It's a small parking lot and storage facility. It has commercial general zoning and OCR, office, commercial, residential, two of the most intensive uses in Indian River County. So if Mullenax wasn't developing this and somebody else would, it could have a building on it. It could have parking. It could have water and sewer, all these other uses. However, what we're proposing is a very low-impact use for the site and less intense, and it could be developed under the current zoning, which allows. Almost half the site is undeveloped. It's going to maintain its natural preservation area. Forty-two percent, to be exact, is going to remain open space, undeveloped. We sighted this parking lot around the environmental concern areas in the natural areas. We protected the eagle's nest. It's the best quality habitat on the site. Where we're developing the parking lot close to Indian River shores is full of exotics, a lot of invasive plants there. We're going to have to remove those Brazilian peppers. So we specifically located this to take advantage and retain the highest quality native vegetation. We love the eagle. The eagle's a friend. We've even got a webcam set up and a YouTube video. It was down for a little bit, but it's up now. You know, with the Florida weather, it's a little sparse and intermittent, but we did it mostly for entertainment purposes. It's a great addition, and I think one that Mullenax is really trying to preserve. We had to go through Fish and Wildlife Commission to get a permit for this site, the federal agency. Even though the eagle is no longer an endangered species, you still have to go through all these regulatory approvals to be able to develop adjacent to the eagle's nest. And we specifically laid out this site with all these criteria in mind. We preserved the highest vegetation. Couple of things I think you guys would want to know. It's important. You know, if we were a dealership on US-1, maybe, we'd have those blue huey lights, you know, the new LED ones that you see. We're having 100% amber lights because not only is it good for the environment, also the sea turtles, and it protects the wildlife as well. Those are full cutoff so that there's no spillover of lights to the environment or to the townhomes to the north. Very, very important consideration. Stormwater design was very important to this site. We have everything draining to Indian River Drive. In fact, we've developed our structures to have extra filtration and extra membrane so that the water is cleaner when it leaves its site after construction than it is in its current state. So really important, we're using the latest cutting-edge technology for the drainage system. Multiple agencies reviewed this project. Florida Fish and Wildlife has supported this project. St. John's River Water Management District supports this project. Indian River County Engineering, they've already issued the type A stormwater permit. We expect to get the Water Management District shortly. We're not expanding the water sewer capacity, and the small electrical utilities are for the EV vehicles and for the parking lot lighting. Landscaping was huge on this project. We had to buffer Indian River Drive and the townhouses to the north, so substantial above and beyond the landscaping that's required by the code. Any tree that was removed due to construction has been replaced inch by inch, or we've had to mitigate through payment. So those two options are well above the county code. The expansion of this project is needed to meet the growing local demand for vehicle sales and storage. This project promotes local economic development while being environmentally sensitive. Mullenax Ford is setting an example of responsible business expansion. And lastly, we have met and exceeded all land development code criteria. This site is private property with the right to develop under the local requirements and local regulations. You received, I think Mr. Krieger said in his staff report, a recommendation of approval from the planning and zoning staff. We respectfully request your approval tonight on behalf of Mullenax Ford, who's in the audience. Our project experts are in the audience. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to address them, as well as reserve any time for public comment responses after, if there's any public comment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to speak? Please give us your name and your address.
My name is Billy Wagner, and I live at 2225 20th Avenue, right down the street. I've been doing Eagle Watch, which is how the state keeps track of all eagle nests in the state. All that information goes to the federal government so that we have information on what nests are active, what nests have been destroyed, what nests have been abandoned. And for example, under the law, the eagle nest tree is protected for five years after it was last used because it could possibly be used again, and the trees they nest in are usually at least 80 years old. So when they do plant a few pines, it's going to be 80 years before it would be usable by an eagle. I don't know how many pines are on that property, but it's not only the nest tree that the eagles need. They need a tree to perch in, so when the adult male, the pair, brings a fish in, the female floods over and gets the fish, and then he goes and incubates the eggs. So they now need just one tree, although that's the only tree that's legally protected. I wanted to talk a little bit about, you can't really, these are the eagle nests east of I-95 in our county. This is the one at Tropic Square, IN-018. It's 10 or 15 years old, that nest. They moved from this development here when a great horned owl took over. Then we have one south of there, east of US-1, and the one at 63rd Street is currently going to be constructed around by Harbor, Grand Harbor. This one isn't being used anymore. This one's in Brevard County, actually. These two are in the Buffer Preserve. The one at Sebastian Harbor is no longer being used. The one at 53rd Street, they just developed right up to it. And the one in 82nd Avenue was surrounded by pines, but it took all the pines down because it was still zoned agriculture, so they are allowed to do that. So once that tree dies, there won't be any eagles there anymore. So what I'm saying is eagles in our county are not doing very well. I monitor all the nests west of I-95 on private land, and those eagles have, half of those nests were abandoned this year, so eagles are not doing well in our county. The numbers are not increasing, they're decreasing. So under this, I understand they got the permit, and they're required to, they're required to keep the lights down, not shining in the eagle, according to the permit. I was questioning the stormwater pond. The one that was at Valdi Ford, if you ever saw it, it was just full of trash. It was never maintained, but of course, maintenance could possibly mean using chemicals to maintain it, and that's not good either. But it was a real eyesore. And you wouldn't need a retention pond on this site if they'd done the below-ground pipes and they'd put permeable pavement in, which they could have done, but they didn't want to because asphalt's the cheapest thing to use. So therefore, wouldn't have needed a retention pond that would require maintenance and all this landscaping. And I am one of the people that wrote the landscaping regulations, the buffer, many years ago, and I never envisioned that it would happen around an eagle nest, and then you're going to have crews coming in there with blowers, mowers, edgers, trimbers, making all kinds of noise all the time. I don't want them to do anything from the retention pond all the way to the eagle nest. You can't have that kind of noise around the eagles. The other thing was, I want to know if they're burying any power lines that are going to be in that area because the fledging eagle could easily fly into a power line, or on a rainy day, if they touch both wings to a power line, they get instantly electrocuted. That's what happens to ospreys. They dive in the water, they get wet, they land on a line, and if two parts of their body touch the wire, actually, one on one of the golf courses here, the wings were blown off the body, but it got shorted out. So I want to ask about the power lines. They're supposed to erect a temporary fence 107 feet out from the nest immediately, and they're supposed to minimize the noise, like, you know, the dump trucks, the tailgate goes bam bam bam, and the backup beep 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 beep. They're supposed to minimize that when possible. Now, the terms of the permit say they have to have a monitor, but the monitor is only going to come once a month for a brief period of time. But I assure you, Eagle Watch has assigned that nest, will be assigning that nest to somebody next year, and they will watch it much more intensely, and we will notify the county if we find any disturbances whatsoever. They have, it's a very, very minimal requirement that they have to fulfill. I would like them to erect a perch or a platform on the shoreline of the retention pond because, like I said, they're going to be removing the so-called exotics, but at least they're plants that the birds can perch on. So they need, it would be really nice if they would erect a perch or a platform like ospreys use, so the eagle has another place to land besides the nest tree because they're going to take down all the other trees, all the other large trees. And that is about it. The perch platform would be very nice. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Do you have any recommendations for this retention pond, whether it be stocked with fish, or what depth it might be maintained to? I see it's a wet pond, not a dry pond.
Yeah, well, I don't know if they'll be filling it with water, or it'll just be runoff from the asphalt. But I think the parking lot is not going to be an active parking lot. It's literally a parking lot, and so they didn't really have to use asphalt. Therefore, they wouldn't have as much runoff if they had the permeable pavers. Would have been much, much better solution. But the pond, in order to stay clean, if it was going to be a wet pond, they would have to put a fountain in to aerate the water. But the most important thing is to have littoral vegetation along the shoreline and have a very sloped shoreline, not just like a borrow pit, so that you have all those different plants, and that keeps the water clean. And fish, fish will just show up. It just, they just, it's like a miracle. If you have clean water, there'll be fish in it. Eventually, they'll show up. And the eagles are either eating roadkill, or they're going to the lagoon to get fish because they do eat roadkill. Any other questions?
I've got one, Ms. Wagner. Is the eagle's nest in Waterford Lakes or Waterway Village, is it still active? You said 53rd.
Oh, so the one at Waterway Village, way back, that was nest number two in the county.
I remember that one.
And they, at that time, when Roland was environmental coordinator for the county, they set aside that island, but that tree, I used to watch that. I've been watching that nest since 2007. They left that nest way long time ago. The tree died and broke off, but they did plant pines on that island, and in 80 years, they might be large enough for an eagle. But that eagle moved to 53rd Street, and then that developer cut the tree down when he bought the property, and then he was investigated, and then the next tree nested in, they set that tree on fire. But now he got his permits. That was in 2012, on my birthday, so I remember. They're now, just now, they just did the land clearing, but they preserve the area where the tree is, and they do have a big borrow pit on there, and there's an osprey platform that the eagles like to perch on. They just need a place to perch. They don't want to be on the ground. The only place they get on the ground is to pick up roadkill or to copulate.
Sounds good. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. State your name and address, please.
I'm Richard Baker. I'm board chair of the Pelican Island Audubon Society, and Billy Wagner's been doing a terrific job over the years looking after our eagles in our county, so you got really a great expert there. It's excellent that Mullenax Ford has encouraged the video bird camming of the bald eagles on the site. It's really nice that they're encouraging people to see it on their website. And it's, so it's kind of, they're interested in protecting that nest, and I think that's very important. You can also observe this nest by going by Cindy's pet store off of US-1 there and just drive around the back of her, of that development, or that installation there. And less than 200 feet, you can sit in your car and watch that eagle's nest. There's nothing between you and the nest. So it's open to the public to observe this nest. This sensitivity, though, of the nest and the development has got us concerned, and we would, like maybe all developers and owners, maybe, this is a good example of how we can improve our development in our county and save the eagles and other birds that are going to be harmed by this development. We'd like to work with the Ford company to help them design a truly protective habitat to ensure that the eagles continue on to nest off of US-1 in the middle of our city, so we're also would like to meet with them to, on their development interests. The plan really cuts down hundreds of trees in that area. If you look at there earlier, you'll see that it's a forested area. Now, it might have some exotics in there, but there's a lot of trees in there and a lot of habitat for birds and other animals. So it's not just the eagle's nest that we're concerned about. This drawing up here shows it's going to be almost 300 nests, 296, is it? Vehicles going to be there, and we're going to be cutting that many trees down, probably, so it'll be one tree per vehicle. I don't know. That's kind of a big cost. But one thing, when you take down all those trees, you're going to be increasing the heat, whatever the surface is going to be, and I hope it's not the asphalt, like Billy said. That's going to heat up that whole area, you know, and our county is getting hotter and hotter and hotter. It's nice if they do get successful and put this thing in, that they would promote plug-ins and hybrid cars. That'd be a great place, I think, to advertise plug-ins, because it's these cars that we have are producing all the CO2 that's causing the global warming and a lot of other problems that we have in our county. So we're getting hotter and hotter. And trees hold a lot of drinking water for us. And trees hold a lot of drinking water for us. They they stop flooding. And this parking lot will let the water probably run off, depending on what the surface is going to be, into the lagoon and ocean. And we are depleting our aquifer and water, and it's getting scarcer and scarcer. Palm Beach, I know you saw in the paper now, some condos in Palm Beach don't have water all day long. The water shuts off. They're just running out of water, drinking water down there. Trees then also provide habitat and living space for birds and other animals, the parking. This parking lot's going to be just a desert for birds and animals. So there are all I think there's some alternative possibilities here to compensate for moving the trees and heating up the earth. I was thinking they could put solar panels in this parking lot over the cars. And thereby, we're they're protecting the cars from from the sun, but they're cooling off the area. And then your the solar panels will be producing electricity, which would be a total benefit for putting this thing in, in substituting for the trees that are cutting down. So you're kind of giving in a little bit more for eliminating all those trees which are cooling our planet. We I like to also think about if they could they've got showing some trees there in the parking lot. And it'd be nice if they could save some of the maybe a big tree or the some of the big oaks that are in that area and use that to help shade too, if they would not just totally clear cut the whole thing, but kind of leave a little bit of options that could be done, that would help cool our our planet and cool the car. And then I like the idea that Billy said too, is that it's porous pavers or permeable things, if we could let the water that's raining, coming down, go into the soil so to protect our groundwater that we have. One thing, I haven't seen what the plants are they're going to be planting around the area. But I would discourage palms. Palms are not trees. They're a grass. And they're totally they they don't do as much for our environment as trees do. Trees are they provide food and palms are just up there and they live for a little bit and then they're gone. Trees live for hundreds of years and contribute a lot. So I would not encourage palms, which are a grass, and put in trees there. And I like that that pond there, the retention pond that's coming in, is they're cutting down some trees. And as Billy was saying, the eagles need trees to nest in. So I would like to see if we could do something about moving that pond to someplace else. Maybe there's other options. Dollar General is next to them there and has a has a retention pond. I don't know if you can't see that drawing, but you've got the drawings of where the area is. And maybe if they talked with Dollar General, they could expand that water retention area to accumulate so that they would could move then and keep instead of having the pond where it is now, move it further south. That would be good. Or find a sort of another solution to the problem of of the pond. Because the pond is 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 clearing off all the trees and it's exposing the eagle's nest. And it's not doing very much good for that. Also, I think it's important when they do the work, as as Billy was mentioning, that they do this during the season when the eagles aren't there. The eagles are come in October and leave in May at the latest. So they have the summer to do the work. So all the construction, all the cutting down of the forest, all the development that's occurring around there, if it could be restricted to the summer months when the eagles are not there. The eagles are out enjoying themselves, and they'll then come back in probably October, November. So that would be good. So it's so and even in the mowing and maintenance of the landscaping, after they get the thing built, if it would be done during the summer months when the eagle's not there, would give the eagles, I think, a better give us a better chance and the eagles to to survive and want to to be there. We're losing our birds. Three billions have gone since 1970, and over 1,400 bird species have gone extinct since humans have been common in our history. And we appreciate that Mullenex is trying to save this eagle's nest, but we think that the eagles need they have better protection than this. And so we would like to work with them with some of these ideas that could make it really a better opportunity for the for the eagles to survive. I think this plan could be improved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to speak? Yes, sir? State your name and address, please.
My name is Stephen Francis. I live at 9130 Santorini Drive, Orlando, Florida. I am the vice president of Mullenex Ford. I'm here on behalf of our owners, Gerald and Larry Mullenex. I'd like to thank, first of all, the planning and zoning staff for their recommendations associated with our development. I'd like to tell you a little bit about us that you since we're new to the area. We've been here, we bought the dealership in 2019 from the Veldt family. Jeff had owned it for years and unfortunately passed due to cancer about 12 years ago. So we purchased the vehicle since I purchased the dealership. Since that time, we we have sold close to 15,000 vehicles at the store. And we service over 1,000 to 1,200 people a month in our service department. So in the in and when we bought the dealership, we understood that the back portion of the dealership was heavy vegetation. And we did a lot of research relative to the development of that and how we could preserve the natural habitat for the eagle as well as as a lot of the foliage. And I think that we've been involved in this plant now, planned for almost three years. And I think using the Mills and Short Civil Engineering Group, along with Dan and the team there, Wesley Mills, we've been able to come up with a plan that not only satisfies the requirements associated with the development of the property, but also with the preservation of the environment specifically for the eagle. We think that's kind of, you know, a known celebrity, if you will, wildlife celebrity here in Vero Beach. We are very responsible corporate citizens. The the construction company, John Sanders of Josen Construction is local. He will do the work there. I'd just like to answer a couple of the concerns brought up by by the two individuals prior to me. The it will be concrete. We will not put asphalt in the back. We want to make sure we have a very stable environment. We spent a lot of times relative to the landscaping and development to make sure we had a natural buffer, particularly as it relates to the to the residential community north of the property. And we try to keep it as as natural as possible. We have we have five Ford dealerships in United here just in Florida. We own 12 across the nation. We have one in Washington, in the state of Washington, four in Alabama, and we have we have seven here in Florida. So we are very, very aware of the sensitivity associated with the environment we do business with, and we're very good corporate citizens. And I'd just like to thank the commissioners for their consideration and particularly the chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind, for the staff. Actually, the developer or the Ford's representative originally was talking about the drainage going towards Indian River Boulevard. Did I hear that correctly? As opposed to the retention pond?
I would have the applicant come up and answer that question.
Yes, good question, Commissioner. So the the stormwater management system that we've designed has the filtration system with the extra membranes and extra pollutant reduction built into each structure. It goes through the retention pond, all the sediment and everything settles. And then the outfall, there's a pipe that goes from the pond to the swale along Indian River Drive. So that's ultimately, once the pond stages up, it has outfall to the east along Indian River Drive.
By staging up, do you mean if it exceeds a certain amount of rainfall or how?
Exactly. Yes, sir.
So basically, it stays in the pond unless there's too much rain, and then it will go to Indian River Boulevard.
Exactly. And it'll leave our site cleaner than it exists today, which is pretty important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another question. That circular radius around the eagle's nest, that's absolute do not disturb, no tree removed from that. And what's the the square footage of that? That the area?
I think that radius is 330, is that right, John?
Couple of different buffers. The non-disturbance radius is 170.
So the radius for the circle, I think, is 170. And then there's two different radiuses on there. And the FWC actually provides limits on construction, when we can have construction activity and when that can occur. So if we don't meet that timeline, we we can't even go to construction. So there are specific requirements to ensure the safety and livability of that eagle.
Is that tied in with the, you know, the summer months that were recommended for construction? I would imagine they might be recommending that as well or requiring it?
Correct, it is.
Okay, good.
And if I may, how long do you expect construction to take?
This is a parking lot, so I would think probably four to six months on average.
Outside that that absolute do not disturb area, there's the preservation zone. What's what's the plan for for the trees there? Are they, you know, going to be removing a good a good portion of them or leaving as many as possible?
All of those are remaining. So anything that doesn't have the pond in that preservation zone, a lot of mature existing native vegetation is going to remain, a lot of the tall pine trees, big historic oaks, that's where the best quality is. All of those are staying. And we are having plants in our parking lot. So the heat island effect, as I think one of the residents brought up, will be reduced. Those are some canopy trees that are provided within there. So we've really taken a lot of thought and consideration for the environment in this small little parking lot project.
What are your thoughts on a perch along the stormwater pond?
I talked to to Mullenex, and they're in agreement. They think it's a great idea. So that's something that we can incorporate on our future land development permit set. So I thought that was a good recommendation.
Perfect.
Yes, I was interested in comment about solar panels. I'm not a huge solar fan, but I remember some time ago, Florida Power and Light wanted to put covered parking at a couple of different schools. And I don't think it'd be right for us to require you to provide covered parking or solar panels. But asking the staff, will there be any restriction against them cooperating with, say, Florida Power and Light to put in solar covered parking?
No, I mean, there wouldn't be any restriction. It would just have to go through the site plan process to, you know, have the structures and then put the solar panels on.
Okay, and had you thought about that at all, you or Mullenex?
We we tried to keep this as low impact as possible. So adding structures and additional infrastructure to the plan is something that we we don't have right now programmed. So I think right now, it's just going to be utilized as a service storage lot for the overflow of cars. In fact, I was I was driving past the site today, and there were some cars staged up along the parking lot. And we really need the space to 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 provide for some of these additional customers.
Well, you might want some help with your electric bills, too. I was just curious whether there are any restrictions on that.
John, any questions?
How did that? How was that no disturbance zone defined, assuming that wasn't arbitrary?
Let me defer to our environmental consultant to answer that question.
Hello, Jonathan. Jonathan Orvets with Atlantic Ecological Services. My address is 973 Mineral Creek Drive, Jacksonville, Florida. The Fish and Wildlife, US Fish and Wildlife came up with the disturbance buffer or the no disturbance buffer of 107 feet. So there's a couple of other buffers out there that are part of the standard incidental tape permit, this 330-foot buffer and the 660-foot buffer. There's some restrictions on what they can do from a construction standpoint during nesting season, which within each of those offsets.
Did you have anything to do with this preservation area or was that just is that a requirement or just extra land?
The 107 feet that's immediately adjacent to the existing nest, that was part of the application for the incidental tape permit from federal Fish and Wildlife. That was, I guess, the plan going in and then the approved plan as well.
General question out of curiosity. I've never seen or heard of a wet retention pond trying to be utilized as something that could stock and keep fish alive. In your opinion, if there were an aeration pump there, proper vegetation, is that even feasible?
Yeah, that's feasible. I think she had mentioned earlier, fish kind of just appear everywhere, especially in Florida. Yeah, there they will be they will be fish in there. I don't know that there necessarily has to be an aeration fountain or anything, but most likely, there will be some sort of, you know, fish in the near future, once it's constructed.
You'll probably have mosquitoes.
Yeah.
They will be there. I've got a couple of questions, the in the staff. Brandon, I guess, the type C buffer, is that a berm or is it just vegetation?
I mean, it can be a berm, but it can also just be vegetation. So this is our least, I guess, type buffer. So we have type A, type B, type C. And typically, these are anywhere between 20 and 15 feet, but they've elected to do a 25-foot type C buffer. So it's going to be providing a little bit more than what they're normally required.
Then I guess my next question is, we're talking about 300 parking spaces, is that correct?
It's 294.
294? Is this something that the county is requiring or this is what you want to have there?
This is to meet our growing business demand for for customer spaces. Yes, sir.
You could probably rent it out to Dyer because they have a bunch of cars. No, scratch that comment. I I like the idea of a perch, and I like the idea of the concrete. And I think what was said right at the beginning of the meeting, if Mullenex didn't do this, it could be developed into something that I think would be a whole lot worse. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And then if I may, should a positive motion be made, just make sure to make the perch a part of the condition. Yep.
Commissioners, Ryan?
Mr. Chair, thank you. For the record, Ryan Sweeney, Assistant Planning Development Services Director. Just procedurally, and Jennifer, you can back me up on this. I don't think we're we can require the perch, but if they're agreeable to it, we'll include it as an additional condition. But just be clear that there's staff conditions and then the additional sort of elective condition.
I think there's suggestions could be made.
Sure.
They can't be demanded.
And I do agree that the any conditions have to directly relate to our land development regulations or contracts.
Thank you.
Mistress?
I think they're agreeable to do the perch, whether we say you have to or not. I don't think that's really a matter that I would stand on at all.
That's your it's your call. We have a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve, per staff's recommendations, with the recommendation of a of an eagle perch.
Second?
Sir?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Passes, what do we have, five?
Six.
Six. Okay, pass unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the second item. This would be item B, Liberty Park, phases two and three, request for preliminary plan development, PD Plan/Plat, approval for phases two, two A and two B with 489 lots, and phase three with 223 lots. Ryle Acquisition Group LLC, applicant Masteller Moller Incorporated. Agent zoning, PDTND, Plan Development Traditional Neighborhood Design. Land use designations, L1, Low Density Residential 1, up to three units an acre. AG1, Agri-
L1, Low Density Residential 1, up to three units an acre, AG1, Agriculture 1, up to one unit per five acres, proposed density, phase two is 1.97 units per acre, phase three is 2.63 units per acre, and this is quad judicial, any declaration in export time? Seeing none, those who wish to speak on this item, please stand and be sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Staff?
For the record, Brendan Christopher Craigan, Chief of Current Development. Good evening, Chair, members of the board, before you tonight is the Liberty Park PDTND, phases two and three, with phase two being broke out into two A and two B, this is for the preliminary PD plan slash plat. So just kind of an overview of our plan development process, so this project originally went through the plan development rezoning and conceptual PD plan, where PCC gave a recommendation of approval to the BCC, and then the BCC ultimately approved the project, we are now at the preliminary PD plan slash plat stage, where the ultimate approval will, or disapproval will lie with the board tonight. If an affirmative, if an affirmative approval is given, then it will move on to the land development permit stage for phases two and phases three, and then finally the final PD slash plan plat that could potentially be approved by the BCC, however, there is a pending legislation that has changed that may truncate that down to a staff level approval. Before we get into the meat and potatoes tonight, I just want to say that for the preliminary PD process, this, your decision tonight is not to opine on any density or lot coverage, or setbacks, or any parameters of the development, that was all decided during the PD rezoning and conceptual PD plan phase, tonight is just to decide if the preliminary plat is, coincides with what was approved for the conceptual PD plan. So for location, this is located south of 85th Street, which is also known as County Road 510, west of 66th Avenue, and east of 76th Avenue, the specific approval decision tonight is west of that red line that you see on the screen, that's where phases two and three will be located. This is just an aerial to give you an idea of kind of how the lots are going to be laid out with the existing conditions on site, most of the existing conditions on site are farmland with some sparse vegetation. This is a PD phasing plan, so the two A portion of the development will be located mostly on the northwest portion of the site, that's in purple, everything in blue, which is two B, is located towards the middle and western portion of the development, and then finally phase three is tucked down in the southern portion of the development, everything that you see in gray is not included within the approval tonight, or was already approved previously during the phase one A and one B preliminary plat and PD plan. There's going to be 10 stormwater ponds that are going to be located strategically throughout this development. Traffic circulation plan is going to call for an extension of the 74th Avenue, which will be a county road extension, it's going to go directly from 81st Street all the way north to County Road 510, there's also going to be a continuation of 81st Street from 70th Avenue to 74th Avenue, there's also some room for a future expansion south of 74th Avenue, should that ever be needed for the county roadway, but currently everything that you see in purple for 74th, that's where it's going to stop, where it intersects with 81st Street, and then finally, there's a county road extension for the southern portion of 70th Avenue that goes south of 81st Street as well. Preliminary landscape plan is going to call for primarily our 20-foot thoroughfare planned road type buffers along 70th Avenue, 81st Street, and 74th Avenue, there's also going to be some beefed up substantial buffers that are 30-foot type B buffers around some of the existing properties that have either residences or farm uses, and then the remainder of that county 510 buffer will be a 26-wide type B buffer, the applicant's actually providing one extra foot in buffer than what they really need to provide, and then also, on the western and southern end is going to be also a 25-foot type B landscape buffer as well. Some of the dedications, improvements and conditions for this project, the applicant will dedicate 70th Avenue, 74th Avenue, and 81st Street right-ofways, there will also be any other right-of-way dedications and offsite roadway improvements that are dictated by the developers' agreement, they are also required to bring drainage improvements to the Douglas subdivision, this is a subdivision that is on the east side of 66th Avenue, it's going to, it's kind of near the fire department parcel that the county has given, so if you can kind of see my cursor, this is this Douglas subdivision right here along 64th Avenue. They're also going to be required to dedicate what's known as 12th Street Park, there's going to be external sidewalks, internal sidewalks and pedestrian systems, our standard street lighting, and then obviously the green space and recreation areas. Staff recommends that the PCC approve the preliminary PD plans and plat for phases two and three with conditions listed in the staff report, that would include the approval of the amended and restated developers' agreement that are, that's going to be germane to phases two and phases three, the final road dedication and offsite roadway design and construction, final landscaping, street lighting, tree protection and mitigation plans, the final design and approval of the signed package and the architectural package by staff, installation and construction of required improvements, which would include the Douglas subdivision drainage improvements, and finally, the dedications prior to or via either the final plat or the certificate of completion per phase, I'd also like to make one note for an amendment to one of our conditions, so in phase three, CFC, I did list a condition that stated there would be a 12th Street right-of-way dedication, that was my mistake, that is actually the 12th Street Park dedication, so there are no roadway dedications that will be required, but the park itself will be required to be dedicated and given to the county. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Any questions on my left?
Yes. 12th Street, seems like a long way away.
Yeah, so this is a very, very large development, and we actually have multiple other sites throughout the county that they are dedicating to the county for preservation purposes, or other entities that will protect the properties, there were density transfers from these properties that were given, so these properties can never be developed for any commercial, any residential, so they are going to be protected and there are going to be conservation easements put over these specific properties, so the whole entire development is actually 444.84 acres, which encompasses all of these offsite parks and properties as well. You're welcome.
Robert?
On the Douglas subdivision drainage improvements, what does that entail, can you expand on that just a little, please, for me?
I will do my best, so basically what's going to happen, and the applicant is here and they can also explain a little bit more, but I'm going to explain it from staff's understanding, so they're going to go in there and they're going to give some drainage improvements to kind of help with what I would assume flooding, and it's going to connect it into, I would assume, existing systems that we have, you know, go up, clean up any debris, dig, re-dig canals if canals need to be redug, but it's basically a public benefit for this project, and because this subdivision is nearby, it was the pertinent location to do it.
So it's not going to be drainage going into a storm retention system, they'll be just fixing the drainage that's in that project?
That's my understanding, but the applicant's engineer is here and I'll let him explain the engineering aspect.
We'll let him sound on that then, when he speaks, thank you.
You're welcome.
Brandon, is this the Douglas, is this Wabaso?
Yeah.
Is this where we, and Ryan, you might remember this, I don't know, did we do some water, and I'm going back 20 years ago, did we do some water and fix some things in this area as well?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I believe, by water, you mean potable water?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, the Douglas subdivision is, you know, a historic subdivision, just to the northeast of the development.
Okay.
In Wabaso, the Daisy Hope Center is right there on 64th, but they are going to try to back in some of that drainage towards the large.
Excellent, excellent, thank you.
On my right, Chip? Jordan?
Okay.
One more thing. I like this map, but it doesn't show the roundabout. I was wondering where you might put the observation deck for the roundabout.
Don't even, don't start that. You good?
I have a couple of questions, we have a school that's located inside of that.
Yes.
And it's a magnet school, so it was initially constructed because it was kind of a draw for this community, and now we're going to be adding to that, which is great, I have a couple of questions, I'm not sure if they're for you or for the applicant, I wanted to know about internal sidewalks for student safety.
Yeah, so as part of this development, they are required to have an internal sidewalk system, but I will let the applicant speak more specifically on the logistics of that, but those will be set in stone when the LDP comes by.
Yeah, because we don't bus, according to law, within two miles, so.
And walkability is definitely very, very important to staff, so.
I'm sorry?
Walkability is very important to staff and, you know, safety of students, so we're definitely going to make sure that, once the LDP comes, that is set in stone.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to add, this is, was approved and is approved as a TND, traditional neighborhood design, so in addition to our typical sidewalk requirements, there's enhanced sidewalk requirements, both sides and wider sidewalks, so.
Awesome, thank you, next question I have is, I remember when this first initially came up to us, and I had some questions about it, because I was concerned about construction vehicles going in and out when we have school in progress, the access for construction was the only access, which is that way, but I see we have 74th Avenue, and at the time when I brought that up, nobody could answer the question of who's going to pay for the light, that is, at 74th and 510, because I know that they were looking at a bigger project that was supposed to come in for, I think, the state or the federal project that was going to pay for the light?
Yes, so DOT is currently also, actually, in a few months kicking off the forelining of 512 and down 510 all the way eventually to US1, that first leg will be from 512 down to Sebastian River High School, and then there's actually five total phases, so it's really kind of a chicken and egg scenario, who, basically whoever gets there first, but more likely than not, DOT will be at that point first.
Have you ever driven over there when school is in or out of session, coming in or out of session, it's really a bottleneck on that street, it needs some attention, because, yeah, if I ever go to an activity at Sebastian River High School at night, and I want to make it on time, I have to probably leave an hour and a half before, so it's a real hassle for people going home at night and in the morning, I know, traveling down either of those streets, because that, that's going to be a problem with that light, will the construction vehicles be using that entrance then, during construction phase of this project?
For phases two and three, no, they'll be coming from, again, this, this project is both sort of, I don't want to say blessing and a curse, but in order for this to work properly with multiple different, you know, routes and options, it has to, you know, be under construction in order for it to work, I also hope once 66th Ave is done, that that will alleviate some of the issues, but again, as you see here, and, well, it's kind of grayed out, but we will have 70th Avenue, 74th Avenue, 81st Street, there'll be multiple points of way to come in and out, but we also, we do have the applicant team, including their traffic engineer, that can kind of explain the distribution of trips.
I'm just worried about construction vehicles going back and forth during car pickup times.
Sure.
That, that's a big concern, because it's not only going to be a problem for kids walking around, but it's also going to be a problem for the amount of vehicles that are in or out during those times.
Thank you.
Did I gather from that that there is going to be a light on 510 and at 74?
I believe so, again, I'll have to defer to, well, part of the issue is that the developers' agreement has not been fully vetted, but I will defer to Brian with the team.
Do you know if that was decided by a traffic study or something, or why it's not put at 70th power line, which is also already busy coming out of the island, so it would be a four-way instead of a?
Again, I'll have to defer, the traffic studies about this thing.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll open it up for.
Kind of safety-related question, is there already a fence around the perimeter of that school, or any plans for one?
There is, but remember, you're going to have kids walking during, my concern is car pickup time.
Of course, yeah.
When kids are walking outside of the school, of course, we have fences everywhere around all our schools, that's not the concern, it's during those drive times, and it's the number of vehicles, if you don't believe me, drive during drive time around that area, it's bad.
What are those lot outlines, I know we're not supposed to deal with lots, but around the school in the gray area there?
Those are ponds, those are, those would be, that's phase one A and one B to the north, those will be residential homes.
Okay, and how far along is phase one?
It's not, they're not under construction at this point.
Dirt storage right there.
You good? Chip, you good?
There's a lot of dirt there.
One of the questions I had is, I mean, we always have, we always have construction entrances, is that the plan for 74th Avenue?
So construction entrances are designated on the LDP, and it can be, it can be a number of different opportunities where they can access.
Ryan, is that something you'd get with the school board on, I guess, and make sure that they?
Will you work with Nick?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll see Nick tomorrow.
Okay, tell Nick I asked.
Will do.
Because I'm just concerned, I've seen the drive time, and I know you're going to build that many more houses, it's just going to get worse, but also, we're talking about the construction, and so when you have that many construction vehicles going back and forth during drive time, it just concerns me.
All right.
Any more questions? Seeing none, we'll open it up for public hearing, okay. State your name and address, please.
My name's Steve Moller from Mastoller &amp; Moller, professional engineer in the state of Florida, our address is 1655 27th Street, also with me tonight is Chad Kelly's, one of the partners in the development company, Andrew Kennedy, Bruce Barquette, and Brian Good's with me here, too, so we, I don't have a presentation to make, Brandon did a great job, we appreciate his recommendation, I will touch on and answer some of the things that came up, the Douglas subdivision, it was mentioned about things that have already happened there, it's not only water that's gone in there, but they've got sewer as well, so county, county did that, we don't have anything to do with that, but we will be improving the drainage in that area, the area really is a little bit remote from the existing Sebastian River Improvement District's physical ditches, that's, we're getting closer as a result of the county's working on the 64th, excuse me, 66th Avenue Phase Four project, the, what's called R13E, their ditch has been extended all the way to, from, basically, it ended somewhere on the north line of the school, and so it's been extended all the way to 66th Avenue, and there's a culvert under it, so this project that we will be doing when we move forward, we will be extending that ditch further east, so it's in the vicinity of the Douglas subdivision, where we can have their drainage go into a more positive area, which should improve their drainage, I think you'll be glad to know that this, when phase two A and the purple is done, the, that will involve the intersection of 70th and County Route 510, which will be signalized, so that will assist, when that gets put in along with the extension of 70th to the south, that will allow, there'll be two ways to get to the school, I can envision when that is done, that most people in Sebastian, I don't know if this is good for Liberty Park, but currently, anybody that's coming to the school that's coming from Sebastian, they're probably all coming down, eventually, if they come down both Schuman, which is really in line with 66, or Powerline Road, which is 70th, if they come down Powerline Road, they have to go, right now, you have to go east to 66th Avenue and come down, so all the traffic going to the school is, is having to funnel that way, anybody that's driving, trying to go south, has to do that, so when this is done, you can envision that people are just human, human nature, when we have that intersection done in that road, and these are public roads, they're going to be county roads, 70th, 74th, and 81st Street cutting across are all route roads that are going to be county roads, so once that is in, I can just see people in Sebastian are going to come straight down through there, or coming from the north, and come in from the west side of the school, as well as coming from the east, so that'll, that'll improve access, because right now, you're correct, there's only one way into the school, and it, it converges at the intersection of 81st and, and 66 right now, so that'll improve. So that'll improve that. Let me see, what else?
Can I ask you a question about that? Will there be a security gate there or will it be access, like buses can go in and out of there?
Well, no, I'm not sure I understand. The question means that this is not a gated neighborhood.
Okay.
This is more, it's a traditional neighborhood design. And the streets that I mentioned, 70th Avenue, 81st Street, and 74th Avenue, those are streets that the developer will be building and turning over to the county. They're, they're county roads. So that's a, that's actually a cost to this project that they'll be building further roads that are attached to the county's grid system. So, so there, there's absolutely no gates at all.
Okay, thank you.
So I think I hit on everything that was brought up. No, we don't have the roundabout shown mark. It's not on our plan yet, but someday that'll be there.
Steve, I want to commend you having the all-star team with Bruce and Chad and Andrew and Brian. You know, there's probably like 500 years of experience with this group, so.
I only bring the best.
Listen, it's.
They're, because I'm not the best, I have to bring them.
Well, you did it. Any questions to Steve? Anyone else in the public?
Yep.
The construction traffic is obviously a concern. I noticed that Terry brought that up. But the way I see this developing in phases like this, I believe that that'll be able to be controlled.
Sure.
Entrances and things so that that construction traffic should be staying isolated into each one of these sections. Now, you know, are the roadway is going to be built for that ability to be able to route construction, you know, away from the school during those times? Or is that just something that you think the roadway will just support on its own from the design?
Well, I, I think that the areas that are in purple, cyan and green, there, there'll probably be access from maybe 510 and 70th when it's in. And I don't think that would disturb the school at all either. And I forgot to mention too, that right now that on the east side of the school, there's a street that's, it's called Sousa. It also has a county number. That, that will also be, you can barely see it on there. It, it will turn and head and go west and tie in with 70th as well. So there's actually another third way of, you still, to get out of the area, you're still going to get on 70th or 81st. But that's another way to kind of get into the site as well.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
I'm not seeing any entrance or any maps here where, I mean, goes through.
70th is really, at the very west side of the gray area, that curving alignment is 70th.
Okay.
Any further questions?
All right.
Now that we're, my daughters went to this school, so I've done this drive a lot. Coming in off of 66, you're also coming out the same way and stuff too. So is there a plan to divert, because the people in the houses that are going to be in the grayed out earlier phases, if those houses get built, you've got school traffic going both directions and stuff. I mean, and now you're adding people trying to get to work at the same time. And I'm not really seeing a real relief there from that 66 and 81st. I don't, I don't know how to do it, but I mean, it's, would, for example, would parents have to come in and, and then keep going to 70th? I mean, is it going to make a, are they thinking about traffic patterns like that for the school so that? Because currently you'd go in, you'd go in 81st, turn around and you'd go back out 81st. So I mean, that street is just deadlocked with the school traffic in the morning.
I can't answer that. I know, and I wasn't involved in 2008 when this was approved, but I know that the concept here was this was theoretically going to be a neighborhood school and that possibly many of the students' parents wouldn't have to drive them there. Now, obviously, since the school's been there and nobody lives around there, you do have a lot of people driving to it. I can't speak for the school district, but you would think that, that many of the children that will eventually go to the school, there'll be a higher percentage that will be living in Liberty Park. And that, that should help to diminish the traffic coming to the Liberty Magnet School. But I know if it's operated as a magnet school, it, it tends to draw students that don't necessarily live right next to the, to the school.
Correct.
I can't fix that.
Yeah. But I understand what he's saying because it's a, it's a big concern. And like you said, can I ask another question? Are you planning playgrounds or, because I don't have it in front of me, so I can't see it. But there are playgrounds in this, in development and other things. Because you wanted it to be a neighborhood school.
Yeah, there's, well, there's a, a park that's going to be, one of the public benefits is east of 66th Avenue, there's a park called Rile Park that's going to be done. And then it's hard to see that area that is on the north side of the site in the middle, between County Route 510 and the kind of residential area in Phase 2A. That is all a park too for the community. It's a public park. Anybody can go to it in the county, but it would tend to cater to the residents of Liberty Park. And then Liberty Park will also have a recreational clubhouse site as well for its residents.
Okay.
Anyone else? Any other, anyone else like to speak? Jeez, you're the quarterback, Steve.
Thank you.
The rest of your team, it's got your back. Okay.
I appreciate it.
We'll close the public hearing. Commissioners? Got a motion in a second? Any discussion? Ryan?
Just to clarify that this strikes the 12th Street right-of-way dedication. That was put, was a scribbler's error.
Yep.
Should the motion be made as amended?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to infer.
Okay. So the motion's been amended to strike the 12th Street.
That's item 6B specifically should be, will be struck.
Okay.
Mr. Discussionary, just because I got to ask, where is the 12th Street Park?
It's at the southeast corner of 12th Street and 58th Avenue.
Okay. Those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Massachusetts Amsley, thank you. Okay, moving right along. Our third item is a public hearing. And boy, I wasn't printing that backup material. This is EAR-based amendments, consideration of the 2025 evaluation and appraisal report, based amendments to the Indian River County Comprehensive Plan. And this is legislative. So I guess. Staff?
Thank you, Vice Chairman Lather, and good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Patrick Murphy. I am the chief of long-range planning. And I'm happy to present to you what has been a very long process. This actually started in March of 2023. And staff internally, the planning staff took a look at our comprehensive plan. And in addition to just making updates to address any statutory changes that took place through the Florida statutes over the time since the last time we updated this, we decided to take a little more deeper dive. However, with having over a thousand different goals and policies, it was a monumental undertaking in addition to all the other duties that staff has. So the county went out and did an RFP, request proposal process, and went and awarded a contract to a private consultant firm called Kimley Horn. And Kimley Horn went about the large undertaking of doing public charrette processes throughout the county, multiple different locations and places to solicit public input, which is very important to have if you're going to create a document that maps out the plan for how our county develops. We need to have a voice from the residents that live in that same county. So they did extensive meetings. They met internally with the different staff of the county that has a hand in development, such as our public works, our utilities, our parks and rec, natural resources, in addition to just working with the planning department. So this was about two years in the making to get to tonight. It's not the extreme culmination of it. There's still about three or four months before we can get to final adoption, which I'll go through later through the timeline. But this is a long time getting here and we're glad to actually be here. So for starters, many, many people may ask, well, what is a comprehensive plan? So a plan is a set of policies intended to plan for and guide for the future of a community. And this typically takes place over a 10- to 20-year period. And it is a collection of goals, objectives, and policies. And what those are is it's sort of, you start out as a goal, sort of a 10,000-foot level looking down. It's a very macro-looking statement. Down to your objectives, getting down to say a thousand-foot level, and then your policies down to your hundred-foot level. So you're getting closer and closer to the ground with all of these regulations that you're putting in place. So goals are typically your long-term and toward which programs or activities are directed. Your objectives are specific measurable intermediate end that is achievable and marks progress toward a goal. And then your policies are the course of action or way in which your programs and activities are conducted to achieve identified goal or objective. So that policies really get down into the weeds. And throwing up a few that we picked out of the comp plan, looking at our overall vision statement for the plan that we have in there currently is to maintain, promote the small-town character of Indian River County as a low-density, low-rise and green county while providing for a variety of housing and transportation choices. So that's, that's your really, really high 10,000-foot level type of a statement. Then you get further down and just pulling a goal out of one of our elements. Land development in River County will occur in an orderly and controlled manner which ensures balanced growth that optimizes the potential for economic development. This is from the economic development plan, obviously. Provides for the efficient use of facilities and services and ensures the protection of the county's rich and varied environmental sources. So you're getting a little closer down to the land with this type of a policy. And then you get down to your objectives and your policies and you're getting further down to it. So the comprehensive plan is actually made up of 13 separate elements. Each plan starts out with an introductory element. And this is a, this really is background information concerning the historical development of the county. This is a good way to start if you're new to a county to look at a comp plan. It gives you a good history of where the county got to and what, where it really came from. Then you get into really the meat and potatoes of your elements. Your future land use element is where we designate our future land use patterns with corresponding densities and intensities. So that future land use element really states what the land can actually be developed, is it residential, is it commercial? Beyond the comp plan is when you get down into your land development regulations and your zoning districts. And that's where you, you drill down to the intensity of that use. So if you have a, a commercial land use and that's your base, you then apply zoning over to it and tells you what those uses within that commercial is in different zoning districts and what types of uses, the height and the bulk and your setbacks and your more development parameters. Next is your public infrastructure element, and this actually consists of five sub-elements, which are pretty self-explanatory. Sanitary sewer, potable water, solid waste, natural groundwater, and stormwater. Following public infrastructure is your transportation element. This establishes level service standards for major roadways, establishes baseline for traffic studies and anything related to our traffic grid. Economic development element is next. This sets forth the county's policies for economic growth and diversification. Capital improvements elements ensures the physical capability of the county to fund needed public facilities. Your housing element seeks to ensure adequate and safe housing for current and future residents of the county. Conservation element sets the foundation for the county to protect and preserve its natural environment. So it sets policies such as upland, upland set-asides, wetland protection, shoreline stabilization. Coastal management is the next element. It's to preserve coastal resources and protect the life and property from natural disasters. Recreation and open space follows. This provides a comprehensive system for public recreation and open space, ensuring that our residents have this definite need that we have for open space and recreating, not just commercial, industrial, and residential. Intergovernmental coordination is the element that identifies coordination and strategies for all the other elements. So it ties them all together. It also establishes policies for how we would work with federal and state regulations, the other cities in the county, and any of the various agencies such as your water management districts that also operate within the county. The last two are your public school facilities, which establishes coordination between the school district and Indian River County. And then your property rights element, which ensures specific rights of property owners are considered in local decision-making. So coming back to what we're here for is to the ear process. The purpose of the ear process is to evaluate our goals, objectives, and policies. And we're looking at those essentially to update anything that has been changed from a legal standpoint through Florida statutes. That is the real core purpose. But in addition to that, you also want to simplify your plan, to remove redundancies, make it easier to understand and use. Sometimes these plans are written in concert with planners and attorneys. And sometimes we speak in our planning language. And for, for the layperson to read some of these things, when you look at these, when you, when you read them, is everyone going to be able to understand them? So we tweak them to make them so that they make sense to everyone. To, to, to remove regulatory items, we're better suited for land development regulations. So when these plans are written 30 years ago, sometimes we put a policy in there that really gets a little bit too down to the ground and not to a higher level. That's really where your land development code and your zoning regulation should take over. And so some of these policies may have been taken out then or going to be taken out and put into the land development regulations and expanded upon. The other purpose is to incorporate and update references to other county plans, such as master plans for stormwater, parks and rec, water supply plans, and to recognize the best planning practices and provide an eye on the future. Where is the county going? Where do we want it to go? That was also part of the public process and the charrettes that we went through. So the property rights element, the reason why I have this slide in here is not because I want to call this element out or that we made any changes, because we didn't. The reason is, when I was doing the PowerPoint presentation, I noticed a scribbler's error in our actual plan that our consultant didn't catch. And that is, we adopted this plan in January of 2022, and it was the same four policies that every city and county adopted back in that timeframe. It was mandated by the state. However, when it was actually put into the plan, it was, one of the policies was duplicated and one of them was omitted. So it was really just a scribbler's error. We're not changing anything. But because I caught it after the staff report was finished and presented to, to all you here tonight, I needed at least call out that there's something different that I'm going to be presenting to BCC than yourself. So nothing really changed here other than it was a scribbler's error. So let's look at the timeline. Upon review and recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the ear will be scheduled for review by the Board of County Commissioners. We are tentatively picked August 12, 2025. And the BCC, once they hear, evaluate, and approve the ear at that date, the county will then transmit the ear to the Florida Commerce, which is the state land planning agency. And this is per state statute 163.31844. Requires us to transmit that within 10 days of BCC's approval. The ear is also sent to the following state reviewing agencies, the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, the St. John's River Water Management District, the Florida Department of Transportation, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, Florida Department of State, Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, and the Florida Department of Education. Those state agencies have 30 days from the date they receive the transmitted materials from the county to respond in writing regarding any adverse impacts to their respective areas of purview that can only stay within their areas. If the Florida Commerce, which is the state land planning agency, that's the overall regulatory body, elects to formally review the ear, they shall issue a report giving its objection, recommendations, and comments regarding the amendments within 60 days after receipt back to the county. If we get anything in writing from any of the state agencies or Florida Commerce, we then have to provide our own responses to those of how we've either addressed them or are going to address them. And once we feel we have successfully done that, we then schedule a final adoption, a public hearing with the BCC. Once the BCC adopts that final reading, we then have another 10 days to transmit everything back to the Florida Commerce. Recommendation, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission review the attached comprehensive plan ear-based amendments, identify any additional need changes, and recommend that the Board of County Commissioners transmit the county's comprehensive plan ear-based amendments to the Florida Department of Commerce for its review. That concludes my presentation. And myself and Mr. Balter would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Patrick. Any questions from the right? Chip? Jordan, check, make sure he's okay down there. Jordan?
I, I know this is still a work in progress. But whenever we consider a special exception, special exception use or a zoning change, we always have to determine concurrency with the comprehensive plan. Anything that would change in our role, you know, any, any kind of groundbreaking proposed potential changes that we should take into consideration as a planning and zoning board?
For our special exceptions, no. The special exception. The special exception process for each individual use has its own criteria in Chapter 971 laid out. We, through this ear process, we didn't dive into any of that land development regulations. That's a whole separate process. We decided to go that way. The ear process is really setting the policies. When you look at a special exception, you're looking at that particular use in that zoning category and what it takes to make it more compatible with its surrounding areas. And that is actually in the land development regulations. So there are actually some policies in the comp plan that we've removed and put them into the LDR, because that's where they really need to be. But this won't affect that process at all.
Mark?
Couple of things. I think you answered it here. I never heard of Florida Commerce. But then I guess you're saying it's the same as the Florida Department of Commerce?
So Florida Commerce is the new name. It used to be called the Community Affairs, Department of Community Affairs, back in like the 80s and 90s, when all the real estate planning and comprehensive plans were created. They were repurposed as the Department of Economic Opportunity in early 2000s by Governor Rick Scott. Just a few years ago, they were then repurposed to this name. It's the same agency. They've just gone through some iteration of name. And they've actually had, you know, some of their teeth filed down. They're not as aggressive as they used to be when they were DCA. But they're still the same agency, and they still have the rights of review and approval.
So it is or is not the same as the Florida Department of Commerce?
It's a completely separate agency. So it's Florida Commerce is a.
They just have the same name or similar, very similar.
Similar name, yes.
Just to confuse me.
Yes. The the state's good at confusing this by using separate words, but same terminology, yeah.
Okay. And then the other thing is, we've been discussing our joint meeting with the commission about the, what is it?
The plan developments?
The plan developments. But that's completely separate.
That's correct, yes. Yeah. The plan developments are housed within the land development regulations. And we understand the the request for that, but that's not covered in in the comprehensive plan.
Robert?
The only thing I had was, you know, getting this document, 222 pages, on Friday afternoon. And I and I didn't even get to it until Monday through my email. It it, I just didn't have, I don't feel I've had enough, quite enough time to really dig into the details of this. And I'm sure, I don't know anybody up here who's read all 222 pages. But, you know, as a council member here, as a commissioner, I I feel responsible to look at what we're trying to pass and have some comprehension of it. I did spend some time looking at that and looking at the types of changes that were being made. I noticed that a lot of dates were being removed or updated. I saw that dates were being removed from policy and left at objectives, which I understand that, that being the appropriate way, because a policy's more like, okay, here's our task in that we're going to continually do to hit this date in our objective.
Right.
And and that's sort of what I recognized there. So I didn't have any real issues with that. I saw a couple of scribbler things in there that that I came across with some past tenses not being proper, some words duplicated, a couple of little bitty things like that. But just just not having as as much time as I would have liked to 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 review the whole whole document. Would have been nicer to have a couple of weeks to do that.
Yeah, understood, yes.
Tom, what do you think? Terry? And I I apologize for.
You should run the school board, because that's what we deal with all the time. Actually, we don't anymore. The way our superintendent sets it up, it used to be we got the documents on Friday night. And so you'd spend the entire weekend reading to get prepared for a Monday meeting. Yeah, that's fun. So was there someone from the school board that helped make some of the recommendations for the public school part of it?
Yes, Michelle and Nick were both consulted on this. And we had many actual conference calls between Kimley Horn, myself, and them.
Michelle?
Michelle from the school board, Simons.
Michelle Simons, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Robert, if it if it helps you, I know it used to be on the county commission, we wouldn't get the agenda book until Friday. The meeting was Tuesday, and and it, twice the size of this. But no, when I looked at this, I started laughing. But Patrick, no, you 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 brought out the strong points of what needed to be there. And I appreciate you all going through that, because it is a tedious process. And rest assured that it goes to the BCC level and let them deal with the minute stuff.
Yeah, like I said, it was just, it was just the wrong weekend. It was the wrong time for me.
Yeah, I I saw that when Ryan said, I said, oh, no, I'm not downloading this one. It's not happening. This is.
I'm sorry, just for clarification, the report itself was 84 pages. With all the additional pages in there was all of the matrix from Kimley Horn. And they went through every single piece of the code and why they changed this and that. And I, and then they didn't use very small font. And so it's blood over another page. It almost felt like there was extra fluff. But I wanted to make sure you had everything that I had when you when you took a look at this. And you're absolutely right. A lot of the dates were changed because the county hasn't looked at doing a deep dive into its comprehensive ear process in a long time. What they have done is they did any updates from a state statute point of view. So another couple of years, when the state comes out different regulations from either House bills or Senate bills, they would update those. And they would hit the mark as far as making sure it was legally up to par. But they didn't go and take a more comprehensive review. So this comprehensive plan, while it was still legal, it still hadn't been looked at in a long time. And for, and these policies, some of these were very old. They went back to the 90s. So a lot of these dates, you're going to hit by by 2015. We need to have X numbers of of conservation land. Well, here it is, 2015. So we hit that number. So that policy either got deleted, or if we hadn't hit it, we extended it out. So there was a lot of cleanup that needed to be done on this.
And I noticed a lot of that, Patrick. I thought you had you had done a really good, good job with that. Because first of all, as a business person, as a as a consultant with with other things, if you don't have a date-sensitive time on an objective, then that's pretty much useless, because it'll just push that can down the road. So I did appreciate the fact that those were updated. And and it looked like a pretty comprehensive job that you guys did. So thank you for all that hard work.
Absolutely. This is a public hearing, and I looked at all the people out there and forgot to have them sworn in. Those of you that really wish to speak, please stand, which I thought that'd be correct. Okay. We're going to close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I, I'm looking at your recommendation here and wondering what the timing is when you want our comments on this.
Your comments would be now.
Oh, that would be tonight.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I think the, I think the BOCC is going to see it in August, correct?
Yes.
I have to agree with Robert. I I guess you expect us to put this under our pillow all over the weekend.
You know what you could do? You can come in August to the BOCC meeting and give them what you really think you want to tell them, if they want to listen to you.
Yeah.
I'm just teasing, Mark. Now, this is, this is something that I think Patrick just touched on the the real meat and potatoes early on of what it is. There's a whole lot more to it.
It is.
Do I hear a motion?
Okay, come back to us again and ask for further recommendations over our 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 recommendation that we don't give you tonight.
Now, this is it. You're either for it or against it. I believe. Is that correct, Jennifer?
Okay.
Do we hear a motion?
Motion is moved approved.
Have a second? All in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you. Moving under Commissioners Matters. Anything from the Commissioners? Planning Matters?
Yes, Vice Chair, there will be no first meeting in July.
Hey.
Oh, no.
All right. Bring everything back in the second meeting in July. And Jennifer, I failed to thank you for being here. I didn't realize we were going to get the boss this evening, so appreciate you putting your time in.
I enjoyed it.
We appreciate you having here, absolutely. I have a motion for adjournment. Y'all don't want to adjourn?
Do I need one?
Okay. Have a motion, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're out of here.